Good evening and welcome to the November 19th, 2024 Manistee City Council Organizational Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with Section 2-13 of the Charter of the City of Manistee, the City Council shall meet at 7:30 on the Tuesday night following the completion of the official canvas, at which time the members shall be sworn and assume the duties of their office. At the regular election of Tuesday, November 5th, 2024, councilmembers were elected to seats on the Manistee City Council. Members include First District, Julia Raditz, two-year term; Third District, Liz Lasky, two-year term; Fifth District, Kay Keck, two-year term; Seventh District, Lainey Roska, two-year term. If the four of you would please stand, I will now administer the oath. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of this state
the Constitution of this state
and the Charter of the City of Manistee.
and the Charter of the City of Manistee.
I do further swear
I do further swear
that I will faithfully perform the duties
that I will faithfully perform the duties
of the office of City Council
of the office of City Council.
for the City of Manistee, State of Michigan
for the City of Manistee, State of Michigan.
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability.
I also certify
I also certify
that I have not violated any of the provisions
that I have not violated any of the provisions.
governing municipal elections in the State of Michigan.
governing municipal elections in the State of Michigan.
as provided in Section 13-14
as provided in Section 13-14
of the Charter of the City of Manistee, Michigan.
of the Charter of the City of Manistee, Michigan.
You have their? Councilmember Raditz.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Lasky.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Keck.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Roska.
Here.
City Manager.
Here.
City Attorney.
Here.
DPW Director.
Here.
Finance Director.
Here.
Community Development Director.
Here.
Fire Chief.
Here.
City Engineer.
Here.
Roll call complete. We will now take citizen comments on agenda-related items. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on agenda-related items only. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Please state your name and address.
Hi, Bruce Allen, 74 Pine Street, Manistee. I'd like to offer my enthusiastic support for re-electing Mayor Sullivan. I think she's done a terrific job in the two years she's been doing it and really grown in the job. She's tackled some difficult problems tenaciously and actually made things better. I look forward to her serving again. I'd also like to suggest modification to the tradition. You know, I would like it very much. I think we would all benefit from the not, those nominating those for mayor to say something about why they're nominating that person for mayor. And those nominated for mayor, say what it means to you to be mayor. That's my suggestion. Thank you.
Hi, Seth Pratt, 355 Second Street. Just wanted to say congratulations to everybody again for being elected and thank you for running. Tonight you have a decision to elect a mayor and a mayor pro tem. That's not an easy decision because everybody is very qualified for that and was elected by citizens for a reason. However, I think this offers an opportunity to consider what do you want for a mayor? So I agree with Mr. Allen that I think it'd be beneficial for the citizens to hear why candidates are maybe wanting the mayor position. But I also think we need to look at this election for the fact that four seats turned. And in my time as a resident in Manistee, I've never seen four council seats turn at once. So I think the citizens were asking for change. With that being the case, I think we need to consider a change in the mayor position. People bring new opportunities, a different perspective, and a new voice. And I think that it's time for that to occur. We need somebody who's going to be collaborative and open-minded, somebody who's going to be empathetic and considerate to citizens' needs, and somebody who's willing to step outside of the box to progress Manistee in a forward movement. And I think we really need to consider what does that mean tonight? Personally, I would like to see this council elect somebody who's going to be positive, engaging to citizens. That has not always been the case in the past. But I believe that we need to keep in mind that as a council, you work for the public. Sometimes there's a perception of it's a us against them, and that doesn't need to be the way that things are. So I think this is a new opportunity to consider what do we want to do moving forward. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Linda Beaton. I've served on city council. I've been mayor before here. I also served in Oxford for a couple of years. I just want to say thank you for stepping up and running for the four vacancies. I am delighted to see four new faces. And this is a routine matter where we go through an organizational meeting and elect a new mayor every time, every November. Next year, there'll be three seats that will be vacant, and we'll see what happens. But right now, this is a great opportunity for everybody to understand what I, how I feel a mayor should behave. Selecting a new mayor, I want somebody who is kind and talks to all residents and treats all councilmembers graciously and respectfully. Those are important traits that you should look for in a mayor. You are elected to serve the voters and do good works for the betterment of the community. Please don't fall into any bad habits of meeting privately outside of council, in a bar or a restaurant in town. It doesn't really look good. I think it's better that you save all of your discussion for right here at the council table. I would also encourage you all to think about bringing back the work sessions. Eliminating the work sessions has deprived the people of speaking in a more relaxed atmosphere to all the councilmembers, and it also deprived the councilmembers from having an opportunity to have a really open discussion on upcoming topics. Thank you. In conclusion, I would throw my support for Jim Grabowski. He's been great at walking around and talking to people.
Are there any other comments? Seeing none, we will move on to the election of mayor for the City of Manistee. At the organizational meeting of the City Council held on this date, the council elects from its membership a mayor and a mayor pro tem. The mayor and mayor pro tem are elected for a one-year term. Under Section 2-4 of the Charter, the council shall elect a mayor by a majority vote of its members. This provision of the Charter requires four affirmative votes to elect the mayor, a majority of the council, regardless of attendance at the organizational meeting. Sections 2-4 and 2-13 of the Charter require that the mayor be elected at the organizational meeting. The voting procedures should continue until a candidate receives four affirmative votes. At this time, council could take action to nominate and elect a mayor for the City of Manistee. The floor is now open for nominations.
I would like to nominate Jermaine Sullivan for mayor. And she is the most qualified to keep Manistee moving forward in a positive direction. She should be entrusted to do this for another year, and hopefully this year, coming year, with less distractions and more positivity from the council as a whole. Last year was fairly embarrassing as a council, as a member of this council. I hope we can do better. We should do better for the people. Thank you.
I would like to nominate Jim Grabowski for mayor because he's served the city throughout his career and done an excellent job, and he's serving it now on city council. He's served it for many years, and this year, I think it's probably time we had a change with a new mayor, Joe Grabowski.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. As I read, as I call your name, please state the name of who you are voting. Councilmember Raditz. Councilmember Smith.
Jermaine Sullivan.
Councilmember Lasky. Councilmember Sullivan.
Sullivan.
Councilmember Keck.
Sullivan.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Grabowski.
Councilmember Roska. Councilmember Sullivan was elected mayor. Need to do the next one? This one? So, hey, I got a question. Do I need to start this over again, too? Okay. Election of Mayor Pro Tem for the City of Manistee. The same provisions identified in the Charter for the mayor apply for the mayor pro tem. The mayor pro tem serves as a mayor in the mayor's absence. At this time, council could take actions to nominate and elect a mayor pro tem for the City of Manistee. I would like to nominate Wes Smith for mayor pro tem for the City of Manistee. Anybody else? Take roll Heather. Councilmember Raditz.
Smith.
Councilmember Smith.
Smith.
Councilmember Lasky.
Smith.
Mayor Sullivan.
Smith.
Councilmember Keck.
Smith.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Smith.
Councilmember Roska.
Smith.
Councilmember Smith, you are now mayor pro tem.
Thank you. Review of council guidelines. Under the adopted city council guidelines, the guidelines are reviewed at the organizational and the city council. Where the guidelines may be amended at any time during the year, the organizational meeting is the traditional opportunity to review the operating procedures of the council. At this time, council could take action to review or modify the city council guidelines.
I would like to suggest a modification to item number 13. Instead of the city attorney shall attend all regular meetings, the city attorney may attend all regular meetings. We could also add a phrase about meetings requested by the mayor or city manager.
Are you able to put the policy on the, so everybody can see it?
So we're looking at this right here, the city attorney shall, we're going to change that to city attorney may attend all regular and special meetings of the city council at the request of the mayor or city manager.
I don't know if anybody, I hope there's a discussion.
How do you want to do that, like just discussion and vote, the same as we have then?
That would require a second first?
I second that. Any discussion?
He's able to attend via a team.
Yes.
Yes, he would be.
Yes. Yes.
It provides flexibility as well, so.
Absolutely.
We would just set up a teams meeting. Heather, would you please take roll? Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Roska.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of establishing regular meetings for 2025 in ordinance with Section 2-13 of the Charter, the city council shall meet in public session at least twice each month at such times as may be prescribed by the rules. The city council guidelines reviewed during the previous agenda items indicate that regular meetings shall be held on the first and third Tuesday of each month beginning at 7:00 PM. Study sessions may be held on the second Tuesday of each month beginning at 7:00 PM. This result and attached schedule for regular meetings and study sessions throughout the year 2025 with exceptions made for known election dates and holidays. At this time, council could take action to attach schedule for the regular meetings and study sessions for the 2025 year. Is there a motion?
Hang, hang on just one second. I wasn't ready to leave the city council guidelines. I'm sorry. I thought we were, didn't realize we were going past that already. Is there, you know, because I, do we have people that are on commissions that are also sitting on council? Is that proper and okay? Or are we, do we need, do people need to give up their seats on commissions if they're a voting member in council? How does that, I think we ran into that last year as well.
Not necessarily. It's going to depend on the specific commission or council they're on and whether there are any state laws that prohibit somebody serving on the legislative body in that commission. So it's going to depend on the specifics.
Okay. Because I know, like, I'm on the Harbor Commission, and I think there's Parks Commission or Parks Commission, and just making sure that that's copacetic.
And there's NRBC.
NRBC.
NRBC states that a council member serves on it, though. That's part of that.
So how do we do that if somebody is up and a member of the public wants to apply in their, like, say Wes is up for Harbor Commission and somebody applies for that spot, and he also applies? How does that work? Does he not vote?
Yes, he would need to recuse himself from that vote.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, so is there a motion to adopt the attached schedule for the meetings?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Any discussion? Heather, would you please take roll? Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'm sorry, Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Old habits die hard. Councilmember Roska.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Citizens comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Do you want me to do officials and staff, or do you want me to wait to?
You can ask, and if you have anything.
Wait, okay.
So we can just, um.
Do we need to adjourn this one?
We need to adjourn this meeting.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
I don't, we need to do the pledge again, no? We don't need to do, like, roll call and everything, we can just go.
Start, okay. No public hearings, we have none. Citizens comments on agenda-related items. Consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered by the city manager to be routine matters prior to approval. Any member of council may have an item removed or taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Items include approval of minutes, payroll, invoices, quarterly financial update, quarterly investment report. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I will second that.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take roll?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Roska.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of approving a resolution to accept a Michigan, Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund grant. Veterans Memorial Park require substantial capital improvement. The city began allocating funds for the improvements in 2018 and has been working to obtain a grant to complete the project. The city has successfully been awarded $300,000 grant from the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund. Total project costs are budgeted at $605,000 with the city's match of $305,000. At this time, council could take action to approve the resolution and execute the necessary documents to accept the $300,000 MDR trust fund grant. Is there a motion?
I would like to make that motion.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take roll?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Roska.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a development and reimbursement agreement for the 91 Arthur Street redevelopment. In October, city council approved a Brownfield plan for the 91 Arthur Street redevelopment project contingent on also approving a development and reimbursement agreement. The developer and Brownfield Redevelopment Authority have approved the agreement, which now needs city council approval. At this time, council could take action to enter in to a development and reimbursement agreement with 9199 Arthur Development Company, LLC, and the City of Manistee Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, and further authorize the mayor to execute the agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second? I'll second. Any discussion? Heather, would you please take roll?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Roska.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of local government approval for a social district permit for the Milwaukee House, LLC. The Manistee Downtown Development Authority, DDA, would like to request and support the Milwaukee House, LLC, to receive local government approval for the social district permit. This will allow the Milwaukee House to sell alcoholic beverages that can be consumed in identified social district area. At this time, council could take action to approve the resolution, supporting the requests from Milwaukee House, LLC, to join the existing City of Manistee social district. Is there a motion? I'll make that motion. Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Nice to see it getting off the ground.
That's what I was thinking. Heather, would you please take roll?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Roska.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of the sale of the city-owned property, Renaissance Property Parcel 07008007-00. The city has received an offer to purchase the city-owned Renaissance Park property located in Manistee Township. The lot was listed at $92,000 and a price of $70,000 was negotiated. The owner of the Lake Shore Property Resolution Solutions and Pure Michigan RV Rentals is requesting to purchase the property. The city has accepted the offer with the buyer for the 70-acre site and the 9.5 site in Renaissance Park. At this time, council could take action to accept an offer and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the purchase agreement and all other necessary documents for the sale of the property. Is there a motion? That motion.
I will second that.
Any discussion?
I don't know if I'm being new and four new people on the council, if I'm comfortable selling the property. I don't know that I have all the background, and I don't know if all the new people do. I'd like to see, first of all, I'm not even sure of all the assets that the city completely owns, all the property, the parks, the buildings, whatever it is. And this is just one parcel, and in this day and age, I haven't seen too many parcels that were listed for one amount and sold for 24% less. It seems like more often than not, they're listed and they're selling for higher than they're listing. Now, I know this, you know, might have been whatever, but it, and has it been advertised? And just a little more background, and I don't know that there's a fire sale to, to get rid of the people's property. So I just, if we could just postpone this for, and give us a little more time on this. Well, and my, last time the parcels were sold, we saw the purchase agreement, and this time it wasn't included. So I'd like to know if the terms were the same.
The purchase agreement is in the backup, we can bring that up, but, yeah, they put in an offer, this is the same buyer of the 70-acre parcel and also the 9.5-acre parcel. So it was an offer, we brought it to council for consideration, but it is up to council if they want to approve it or not. These are parcels located in the Manistee Township industrial area. Some, we have some smaller lots, which are, also have the protective covenants. These are mainly just industrial parcels, but we have seen some activity lately on these. It's up to council if they'd like to sell this one.
For how many years?
My understanding, these have been owned by the city since the early 2000s, so.
How long have they been actively listed? And did we miss on the listing price? Is, you know, that's a big discount that. Well, and there's also, we're not going to get the 70,000. You have the buyer fees, the seller fees.
The survey fee.
And it is industrial, is that correct?
Yeah.
It is, correct.
And I understand that it makes it difficult for the land usage, but the same organizations have 80-some acres already. I would like to see them do something with the 80 acres they already have. Maybe we can, you know, do a counteroffer or some kind of contingent after we see him produce something on the 80 acres, that we could offer him a price again, because we don't know what the markets will do either. But I'd like to see him, we're kind of putting all our eggs in one basket on those parcels by them and this organization having 120 acres, not giving the opportunities for other.
But paying taxes on it.
Well, it doesn't cost.
There's no caring cost.
Oh, okay.
So right now, being in a Renaissance zone, there, that property before it's sold is not bearing any tax revenue for Manistee Township?
No.
And if it were to sell, would that then help Manistee Township in their tax revenue collection?
That's my understanding, yes.
So being a neighbor, we, if they held property that we had that was tax-exempt, that sale would then produce revenue for this organization?
Correct, yep.
So one of the trade-offs that maybe isn't being calculated in the cost is the value of being a good neighbor. And encouraging businesses to expand from one piece of property into an adjacent piece of property. From what I understand, looking at the map, it's an L shape around the original property, which I don't know if it'd be as an attractive parcel as a full square lot. So I'm already concerned about that particular property being as attractive as neighboring properties.
That's probably the issue. You know, and how many other parcels do we have for sale in that, in that Renaissance or in that, in that, in that industrial park? You know, this, the company is, is investing in Manistee by buying the property and, you know, committing to, you know, the RV rental business.
And I'll just mention, so this is, it's kind of, you see the 9.5 acre that's a smaller parcel than you have in the, near the bottom by Eastlake, just to south of Eastlake. The 70-acre parcel that was purchased is just to the right of that. So they purchased the 9.5 and the 70-acre, 70.6 acre parcel. The 28-8, the one we're talking about today, is that one that was mentioned. The 288, the one we're talking about today, is that one that was mentioned is an L-shaped parcel. The 40-acre parcel is still available as well. And then we have a couple of those individual lots and on the top of the screen there.
When was the last time we had a sale of anything in this area?
We've had, I can give council kind of a record of the past, but we've had a few of the lots last year, the smaller ones to the north. But the bigger parcels, this is the first time we've seen some activity, but it's, it's been the one buyer.
Okay, thank you.
I'm, I'm just concerned that 100% guaranteed that won't be developed if it's not sold.
How long has it been listed, actively listed?
I can confirm that with Mr. Canooty, but I know at least in 17.
He's had it for a couple of years, yes, since 2017.
Yep, and some extensions. I can get that for council.
Anybody else? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
No.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
No.
Councilmember Ruzga.
No.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Now we will have a report from Barry Lynn for the PEG Commission.
Thank you, council. We're at 8 o'clock, moving fast. I promise I'll slow things down, unfortunately. I know I'm supposed to keep this to 10 minutes and I don't think I'm going to be able to do that tonight. Partly, so the PEG Commission met last night and in light of the fact that four of you are new, I'm completely changed what I was planning on presenting and going to kind of go a deeper dive, talk about what PEG is, because I'm not sure the new members actually know what, why we exist and why we're here, and go through some history and then kind of get to some of the more relevant topics from today. So that's my little apology for maybe keeping you a few minutes longer tonight. Hope you don't mind. So, PEG. Get the question all the time. PEG, what is that? It's an acronym. It stands for Public Education and Government. PEG came into existence in the 1980s. I'm not actually sure of the, or origin of Manistee's PEG Commission. Either late 80s or probably early 90s, so 30-plus years ago, we've been around. But that acronym and commissions and organizations like our commission came into existence as a result of the new technology at the time called cable television. And companies approaching cities like the City of Manistee saying, "We want to be your cable television provider." And out of that process, regulations came into existence that said, "In exchange for the right to basically monopolize the consumer base of a given area through a franchise agreement with that municipality, we're going to require that you provide public access on some of the television that you are providing to these, you know, community members." And that's really where PEGs came into existence. As that acronym, Public Education Government alludes to, there were three primary goals in that kind of public access model. One, public. And going back a few years, and I may be, I'm just trying to look at ages, I'm fitting in the middle here, but.
Don't do it, Barry.
Saturday Night Live, Wayne's World, if anyone remembers that and the subsequent movie, that was public access television in that day and age. My, the world has changed. I'm going to get into later some of how things are changing and how technology has changed a lot of things. Education. There was a push in a variety of different ways for public access to provide avenues into the education environment of this new-fangled thing called, you know, television and video and video production and all these things. And our organization in that era and even more recently than that has had agreements with our high school and there have been video production classes in the past that our organization was involved in providing equipment and even some other resources for that. Government, that is primarily what we have evolved to today. And that's providing access to the public, to what you all are doing tonight and what all of the city commissions are doing and various other governmental groups. And I'll get into some more of those details a little bit later. So, we've been around 30-plus years and things have changed a lot. We used to be commonly known as TV2. Back in the days when cable was new and you only had a dozen or so stations, they started at two and went up. I guess they technically still start at two and go up, it's just they go up to the thousands now. But we were that first station and therefore we were very prominent in the community because you turn your TV on, you're probably starting in that area and, you know, the latest city council meeting or whatever that content was, was something that was, you know, very, very accessible. We're now at channel 198 and 199 and we're not even on the air right now, but that's yet a story. Already talked about franchise agreements. So in that era, each city would negotiate a franchise agreement with their local provider. And there were many small, little independent operators that were providing cable television services. Over time, over 30 years, they've merged, they've become big national conglomerates, and the ground rules ultimately have changed. So instead of there being franchise agreements that are negotiated with the City of Manistee, the state now basically has a statewide franchise agreement. And yes, there's still an agreement with the city around fees and, because they're using city assets, but the local community has much less input and involvement than they did at the beginning. For many years, Keith Brown was the director of this organization. I took over for him, I actually want to say six years ago, I think it was. When he retired, I said I would agree to do this on an interim basis for a few months and six years later, I'm still here. Maybe that's my problem. I've been on the PEG Commission now for at least 10 years. I'm not exactly sure how long. And the organization has changed a lot in that time. When I started, our budget was about $50,000 a year. Keith Brown was a full-time employee. He was drawing a salary of about $40,000 a year and about the other 10 was equipment and random stuff. That changed about seven years ago, I want to say, when the city stopped funding the organization. Up until that time, the city was providing about half of that revenue and Filer Township, Manistee Township and fees through Charter Spectrum made up the difference. The cities, the city stopped funding us, so then we regrouped. Keith went from $40,000 a year to $10,000 a year, even though he was still basically doing a 40-hour-a-week job, but that's how we kept operating. Then when I took over, our budget went from approximately $12,000 a year to zero. I've been doing what Keith was doing as, on a voluntary basis. Again, I was anticipating it not to be quite this long, but again, that's my problem. PEG funding. So historically, we received the lion's share of our funds from the city. And then basically, there's an agreement in place that we also record the meetings of Filer Township for their board and Manistee Township for their board. And they were paying us for those services as well. And then the final component of our budget or in our revenue is a currently assessed fee for all city charter subscribers of, I believe it's 15 cents a month. And that is coming to us for the purpose of basically equipment and things along those lines. So, moving forward, kind of a, a little bit different historic standpoint. So, we used to be a commission of seven members, like many of the commissions are. At that, when, when I first got on the commission, that is the makeup of the commission with seven members. There is a, per our bylaws, Filer Township, because they're, we're contributing financially, and Manistee Township could recommend members as well as city members. And then ultimately, you need to be a county resident to be on the PEG Commission. So it's a little bit broader than just the city limits because of some of the organizations and municipalities that we are providing services for. And when I started, there were four city members, two from Filer Township and one from Manistee Township. Over time, we lost some members. We had an issue of maintaining a quorum at seven members, so we got our bylaws changed and we went down to five members. Then COVID hits and out of COVID, we again are struggling even to maintain a quorum available with five members. So this past year, our bylaws were changed yet again to reduce us to a commission of three. And currently, we only have two people sitting on the commission, myself and Al Gorman and I. Oh, nope, he did show up. Thank you. I know he had a obligation earlier in Trevor City and he was sure if he was going to be able to be here. A commission of two people, hopefully really looking for a third, is very difficult. Primarily because of open meetings rules. Al and I cannot talk to each other because that is considered a quorum of our commission and therefore we can't meet or talk anywhere outside of actually a formal open meeting. So, really would look forward to someday of being able to reverse that trend. So where do we stand today with what we do as an organization? I kind of talked about what we, where we came from, where our roots were, but what do we do today? Today, we primarily maintain our website and YouTube channel. So all of the city council meetings, city commission meetings, Filer Township, Manistee Township, now Oneakama Township, and a little bit of other content occasionally gets mixed in. We manage in our central repository, which is ultimately hosted on YouTube. And that is the primary mechanism that people watch our content because it's on-demand, it's available anytime. Unlike traditional streaming, not streaming television, serial content on television. You don't have to wait till 8 o'clock to see the latest city council. You can watch it anytime on your phone, your laptop, your desktop, tablet, whatever. However, we do, although there's an asterisk there, have still, because of our roots, that Charter Spectrum channel currently at 198 and 199, which is quite frankly hard for people to find because it's just buried in the middle of 1,000 channels. So unlike the days when we were Channel 2 and we were front and foremost, now we're buried. But that's part of how our partner in Charter Spectrum operates. They honestly, I don't think I'm stretching things too much to say, would prefer we didn't exist because we're a cost to them, but no revenue. It's an obligation that they have to provide this capability, but they don't have to make it easy or convenient. And I'll get a little bit more into that in a bit. So primarily, we are responsible right now for city meetings, Filer, Manistee, Oneakama Township, the airport board meetings, since that's, I'm on there, it's easy for me to bring that content in as well. So, there are some issues with our Charter Spectrum channels. So this goes back about a year now. So it was about this time last year where our channel went off the air. And after tracking down why, basically the power got cut to our equipment, which the demarcation point between Charter and our equipment was housed in what is, is, was, will be Kennedy Elementary. And as that renovation project got started, our equipment got powered down. Well, tracked it down, it got turned back on. So we were back on for about two months and then in January, when the construction actively got started, the line was cut. So as that building has been actively being renovated, and I actually got a tour last week, very fascinating, we've basically been off the air. So that's not good. What do we do to get back on the air? So we reached out to Charter and basically explained the situation and they said, "Oh, well, because the way we're housed is the line comes into Kennedy, we use MAPS fiber to get us from Kennedy over to MMHS and then we've got a little space down in the basement of MMHS, which is where our equipment is." So Charter, can we move that line from Kennedy over to MMHS? They said, "Sure, we'll research that and get you a quote." Well, they got us a quote and it was $90,000. Again, they're not incented to really make us successful, so I looked at that and said, "That ain't going to fly." But that was, you know, many months ago that this process has been going on. What's been taking so long? Well, part of our challenge was that we, late last year, we were at five members in our commission. One passed away, one went MIA and just refused to be contactable, and one decided he, it wasn't a good fit and resigned. So that left us with myself and Al. Commission of five, but only two members, we can't have a meeting. We can't have a quorum because we don't have enough members. So it took a few months to work with the city manager, get our bylaws revised, get that approved by city council to reduce us down to that three, so we could start having meetings again, which we, that all got finalized, I think around May is when we were able to first have a meeting again after that transition. So we have that quote of $90,000. It doesn't make sense, in my opinion, in the PEG Commission's opinion, for the city to invest that much money in something that provides in this day and age much less value than it used to, especially since all the content is available via other means, our YouTube and website. So the city manager and I have had some back and forth on this and looked at other options. So are there city buildings that have Charter already going into them that we could relocate there? There aren't any. Ultimately, we've now come back full circle and said, "Well, that construction at Kennedy is now a year later and it's getting more close to the resolution and wrapping up of that. Maybe that's where we just need to re-get that connected." So that is the reason myself, the city manager and Ken Blakey Shell from MAPS did a little tour and kind of mapped out where we could be in that renovated building and kind of a timeline that we could get started on. a timeline that we could get started on that. So depending on direction from council tonight, that is probably the direction we would go. I actually talked with Charter yesterday and they gave me the wonderful good news of, well, that sounds like something we could give you a new quote for. So we'll see what that will cost us. We'll see how much they really don't want us to exist. But they also then did end with, you know, we're really slow at getting PEG stations up and running again. The average time is a year. So even once we get through this process, it could still be a while before that station comes back online. So that's my report on why we're not currently on Charter Spectrum and what has happened and what hopefully can happen to resolve that. And I know there have been council matters and I get some requests myself as to what's, what is the status. I'm sure others do as well. So there you go on that. So now, that's all the background. This is what I wanted to spend most of my time talking about is, where do we want to go? What is our future? Because ultimately, you could tell me after the end of my little talk here, why are we even trying this? Why don't we just shut it down? Why don't we just host the city council meetings and city commission meetings on the city website? And why do we even have a PEG anymore? It's not relevant. And in some ways, I could agree with you on that. And actually, both Al and I would say, okay, you've just taken something off our plates and we can do, move on and do other things. But the two of us are committed because we think there is something here, that there is a need in our community that isn't being fulfilled, that we believe we can make a difference. What is that? Well, back in 2016, 2017, we started a strategic planning process to kind of answer that question. Where does this go? And specifically, the challenges and the differences in the world is, going back to our acronym, Public Education Government, PUBLIC. Back 30 years ago, there was no outlet for the public to have video content accessible by the public, except through things like public access television. Now you've got YouTube. You've got a plethora of platforms that allow anybody with a smartphone to be publishing video content. So that need has completely gone away. Education. Again, a lot of that was about introducing those students to video production and all of those things because equipment was expensive then. Now everyone is carrying a camera that is far better than anything that existed, you know, older than 20 years ago. So that has kind of gone away. Government, though, the needs of the people, the voters in this community or any community, to know what their government is doing still is there. And that is something that I very much feel very strongly is that for democracy to work, the people need to know what their government is doing. And I think that is something we currently do. Now, that could be accomplished in different ways, so it's not necessarily, that alone isn't necessarily the reason that we should continue to exist, but it is a reason that I feel strongly needs to be met. So you pair some of those technology changes with some other changes in our community that I've been here now 18 years and have seen firsthand. And they're not unique to our community, but you know, you can look in our community and see these changes. And that is, 20 years ago, at this council meeting, you would have the newspaper, and they're here tonight, I saw him earlier taking pictures, you would have at least one radio station, local radio station here, you know, providing news content on local radio the next day. We don't have that radio news content anymore. We are remarkably blessed for a community our size to still have a daily newspaper that has reporters that gather information. But the staff they have compared to 20 years ago is greatly diminished. Their ability to port news isn't what it used to be. Again, getting into that aspect of, how does then the public know what their governments are doing if they don't have it available through local news channels? Local news is kind of disappearing and it's being replaced with social media, which isn't news, isn't, I mean, it's information, but it's not quality news. There's nothing as good as firsthand, you know? People sitting here are getting it firsthand in real time. I believe a second best case is watching the video of what happens here at a later time. But I do think news avenues that take what can be some very deep discussions and distill it down into manageable content, that's important. And to that end, as part of our strategic planning and out of those processes, we came to a realization that we need to be working with these partners. And prior to COVID, we were having regular meetings with the News Advocate and working with them because it can save them time and not have to be at a specific meeting at a specific time if they can just watch the video and do that same reporting, but doing it at their desk. And that is something that I know they do because I sometimes get requests of, when is that meeting going to be posted from people within that organization? So democracy needs informed voters. How do we accomplish that? I think PEG can play a role in that. Trying to follow through my notes, see, make sure I'm not covered what I intend to cover. I said earlier that there's a need that I believe exists in our community and it is broader than just this concept of video. Because the reality is that we post videos, this, tonight's will be probably an hour long, some of these can be a couple hours long, you know, depending on the commissions, planning commissions, those tend to be longer. They've been three or more hours on some of those. Most of the public isn't going to watch a four-hour meeting. They're concerned about a part of it. That's what news organizations do, is they, they watch through that meeting, hopefully with it being online, they can fast forward and skip through the things that are boring, but they distill it down. What can we do as an organization to help facilitate that? Or we can partner and work with organizations to make it easier for them to do that. But also, if you think about the videos we do today, which are mostly governmental meeting-based, all of those meetings are events. There are a plethora of different events that happen in our community. You know, from things that are interesting in this context, governmental events, there are entertainment events, there are church bazaars, there's, there's hundreds of different events. And you have organizers of events and you have people that are interested in those events. And in our world, it's really hard for that information to go between those two groups. If I'm hosting an event, where do I go to get that information known? It used to be, actually in PEG's early days, there was a sticker at the bottom that was a community calendar. We don't have that anymore. We don't really have a concept of community calendar. Yes, the newspaper still does provide one, but the newspaper doesn't have the broad reach they used to do. Radio stations used to provide that service. They don't. They're much more scripted, automated, and less DJ, you know, community content-based. So there's this disconnect between how do you get information about events to the public and where does the public go to find them? It's all over the board. Oh, we'll, we'll post it on our Facebook page. We'll post it here. We'll post it there. If it's an event that's of interest to the broader public, it might be appropriate for the Manistee Tourism Authority. The library maintains a community calendar. There's probably 20 places that you could get your information out there. Each of those places serves a small segment of the community. But if you're hosting an event, do you know where all those are? Do you know who to contact? Probably not. If you're a person looking for something that's going on, where do you go to find that information that gets a complete picture? It doesn't really exist. This concept of having a community calendar has come up multiple times in various organizations that I have been involved with. I'm currently on the Tourism Authorities Board. They struggle with this. I used to be on the County Library Board. They struggle with this. How do we get people to give us the information so that we have something to publish? I've talked, had this conversation with former city managers about the same need, Chamber of Commerce. There are all these organizations that would love to be, but don't really have that mindset. Al and I believe that this is a role that PEG could do, is that we could basically be that central point and that these other organizations could then pull the information out. So if you're hosting a meeting, you just need to notify us. We then push that information out to those that want it. If you want to know what's going on, you've got one central place to look and it has got everything. And then there's another concept here, which I will call push versus pull. We hear that kind of in a technology base around notifications, are they push notifications? But today, a lot of information around events is pull. You hear about something because someone is talking about it and then you can go online and find it and get the information. But if you don't hear about it, you don't know it exists. It's not getting pushed to you proactively. You have to kind of know to then get the information. Having a central repository, a central place can be that. So stepping back from that calendar, how does it tie into videos? How does it tie into meetings? Well, as I started with, all of these meetings are events. There's a calendar that is kind of showing you what's going to happen, but that doesn't mean that there's not also a place for you to look at what has happened. This is what has happened and this is the video that goes with it. This may be the news article in the News Advocate that was written about that thing and all that information is pulled together in one place, again, so it's easy to find if you're interested. From the concept of push notifications, you subscribe to, I'm interested in city council meetings and I'm interested in, you know, the planning commission, but I'm not interested in the DDA. So I only want to receive information about these things. And we can push information out that is relevant to people so that they know what's going on, from the workings of their government to what's happening this weekend. So that is our big picture. That is what we want to try to accomplish. Are we going to get there anytime soon? Probably not. But that is where we want to go. And what we're really looking for tonight is basically your blessing that we continue or you can tell us that we should just stop and we should fold the PEG commission and change the city charter and remove that as one of the commissions and, you know, we get a few hours of our lives back and we move on. So that is what I'm here to update you on. Sorry I took a half hour and doubled the time of your meeting tonight, but I hope you found this useful, especially those that are new members. Do you have any questions?
No, just thank you Barry and Al. Your dedication, passion, heart is definitely there. So thank you. Thank you for that.
Does Charter still collect that fee?
Yes.
Hey, where does this money go to now?
It is currently going, so the PEG commission, so as a city commission, while the city doesn't currently fund us, they do provide us services. And one of those services is basically they do our finances. So we have a fund balance right now, roughly about $40,000, which can be used to start accomplishing some things. And that money is going into our fund balance right now because we're not spending anything really out of it. So it is collecting. So our fund balance is slowly going up. That, we bring in probably right now about $4,000 a year, I think, through that fee on Charter bills. And again, its purpose is for equipment to enable ultimately us to be on Charter. So when they presented their $90,000, they said, well, you're collecting a lot of money from us. And not only referring to that fee, they're also referring to the franchise fee that the city collects because they think they should get, they're entitled to it all, but...
So the only thing I can, a lot of older people get a hold of me because they're not up to...
Yep.
Modern stuff. And the only thing I can do is tell them to go on the city website or YouTube, you said, so...
Right.
...what they're doing.
Yeah. So, and, and that is specifically why there is still relevance today in having that Charter channel, is because for certain demographics within our community, that is what they're familiar with and that is their means of accessing some of this content. And us not being able to provide that means that we're not accessible to some people.
A lot of people have asked me what...
Yep.
And that's why I've asked Bill to check with you, see if the school can give you, I don't know, if we have anything like that, do we build a...
I think, I think the, the school is probably the best option. Because it's a lot of money to route a new fiber. It's much cheaper to use the fiber that's going near the school right now. There was a question about using the funds to do live streaming of council meetings, so that was something, I don't know if we have a quote for anything like that, but...
Yes, that, I mean, I, I think your existing equipment wouldn't be that hard to add a little bit to accomplish that. I've actually got some equipment that is, does live streaming and, you know, so if that is something you wanted, that could be accomplished.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? No? Does PEG, oh, I'm sorry, does PEG have a Facebook or any other social media currently besides YouTube?
We don't, because we've kind of been trying to resolve this process of, do we have a future and a direction? Because right now, one of our challenges is, is that a lot of people don't even know what we have. And, but we need to renovate our website, we need to get those different avenues in place before we really start promoting and trying to push our message out there further.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes?
Thanks, Barry.
Thank you, Barry.
Citizens comment, "This is an opportunity for citizens and attendants to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read."
I'm just hoping that new members on the council will start... I'm just hoping that new members on the council will start thinking about daily rentals. I've been commenting a lot about them. They're a business in residential area. I didn't get a letter back from the city when I requested for how they can have illegal business going on. They were supposed to give me a letter to, I asked for it at the last meeting, and nothing yet. We're zone residential. Check our zoning ordinance and see if it's legal to even have a business like that in there. A lot of yous that meet the candidate, you heard me probably ask the question to our state representative, and he said the council already has the authority to shut it down. And the state does recognize daily rentals as a business. And I'm sick of it. A lot of people are. If you don't want to handle it, put it out to the public. Let the people vote on it, and then we can take care of it for you. Because there's a lot of us that are pissed off about having daily rentals in our neighborhoods. And you keep, we keep hearing there's, we need more housing for workers. We don't have the housing. These houses will be available. They can either sell them, or maybe you guys can come up with a long-term rental agreement with these people, maybe keep their tax rate at the same rate for five years, have them sign a contract, and that, something like that. But to me, you got to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes? Mr. Campbell?
We have one.
Oh, sorry.
Janet Zarnicki. I live at 421 East Fox Farm Road, and I also have a residence at 378 Ninth Street. I'm here to address the short-term rentals. The growth of short-term rentals is more prevalent in many of our communities, and Manistee is not alone. The local unit of government here needs to establish reasonable rules and regulations that offer a balance, allowing short-term rentals in ways that keep all property owners in mind. The city needs to engage with residents and property owners to collect some feedback. We need to have maybe an online survey or in-person meetings. We need to have something established, who's going to manage the program, and how is it going to be determined where short-term rentals may be located? I did research on it. I, I looked into Cadillac's short-term rentals. I looked into Frankfurt's short-term rentals. I looked into the city of Muskegon and Lunnington's short-term rentals. All their information, proposed ordinances are online, so the public can view them. Which, I, I think that would be a good idea, is to put all this information online and to, so people can look at it, read it, review it, compare it with other places that have short-term rentals. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Congratulations on getting elected. My voice is terrible today again. But Dave Gramson, 290 Fourth Street. And I want to talk about the short-term rentals that we needed here in Manistee. We need people coming to Manistee to show growth. People are spending money here. You're always going to get people complaining. We only have 1,200 rooms in the whole county. Short-term rentals, there might be as many as 100. Let the market determine. People are selling them. They're not making as much money as people think they are. People invest the money, myself personally, I've owned one. I built it up, a house that was pretty much blight. Turned it into a short-term rental for people with pets. People came, loved the area. Maybe they're going to come back. Maybe they'll come invest here. We have to take Manistee further. We're looking at Frankfurt, they don't have nothing boarded up downtown. Lunnington's exploding. Cadillac's doing great. Traverse City's off the charts. We're sitting here regulating things out. Because people are complaining about noise, that's for the police department or the parking, everything else. And then we don't want to discriminate against people investing, putting money into these buildings that myself, a lot of these houses got fixed up, which trickles down to construction money. The people coming in here, they're staying there, they're spending money at the restaurants, there's tips, there's all kinds of people coming into Manistee, and you got to give them the opportunity to come. Now, if you're going to take that opportunity away and limit it down to 30, Manistee's not going to grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor. So just for the public and I inform council, but we've been putting, giving, giving the parcel layer data to Graticus, so that software, we should have some information about the number of short-term rentals we have in January. So I think at that time, provide that to council, we can have a more informed discussion at that time. Another update, PCA has agreed to provide a cardboard trailer and put that at our DPW, looking at early December, so I'll keep you informed on that. But we're making room with auctioning off some of that old equipment, so I think that will give people an opportunity to get rid of some of the cardboard during the holiday, and we'll have that through till when we bid out the waste hauling contract as well. Thank you.
Other staff? Brad, do you have any comments?
Yes, I'm just thrilled about the grant for Veterans Memorial Park. And Heather, I was wondering if I could have the names of the people who worked on that grant, and just very impressive work. I want to thank, I want to thank you for bringing that to us.
Mr. Smith?
Welcome to the new members. I mean, I'm excited for this, this next generation. It's going to be fun. And Heather, and your staff for the election. I wasn't here for the last one, so you're going to hear it from me today. Excellent job. I've heard nothing positive comments, so we're really lucky to have you, and thank you and your staff for me, please.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Very happy to be here. And any comments or anything that anybody wants, feel free to call, and looking forward to working with the council. It's a great council. Thank you.
Ms. Kep?
Thank you for bringing me here. I appreciate that, and I'm looking forward to working with everybody. Heather, I agree with Wes. Great job with the election. We talked about it the other day, and the, the early voting just was phenomenal as far as I was concerned. I came in and did early voting, and I look forward to serving you guys. Thank you.
Mr. Gorowski?
Yep. Heather, you did a good job. I was here that day, and a lot of people were coming and going, so it was a good deal. Take care.
Ms. Roska?
Doesn't leave me much to say. But I'm glad you voted for me. Congratulations to our mayor and our mayor pro tem. I know we're going to have disagreements, but I'm sure we can move past it and continue to work together for Manistee, so...
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.